Get out.
There you go.
I, I think that was. Yeah.
So Carrie, your daughter getting excited, nervous?
Yeah.
All of those.
That's neat.
If you're. All the, how about mom and dad to handle it all right?
Yeah. Because a lot of.
We'll go ahead and call this board of supervisors meeting to order and we welcome everyone. I've asked Supervisor David Gomez to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gomez. We'll now go to one B called the public. Is there anyone that'd like to address the board and call to the public? Morning Sheriff.
Tim Sumner, Green County Sheriff. May approach Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please. Thank you.
These are just some notes. I have a short amount of time and actually I've got to skip out the meeting. We have some events, things with the school going on, which I won't be able to. Wasn't sure if I'd be able to speak on agenda item number five or not, so I'll just speak on it and call the public for the moment and give you the notes that I had, just some, some brief things I looked at. It goes over some of the. Yeah. Minutes, I guess really not minutes, but recording from last time, if you can see, it goes to the, the recording time there at thirty two minutes, goes about eleven minutes long on that last agenda item five C from your last board meeting. This is on the, the fuel consumption and the diesel tank, which is added along with the synergy contract, as you know, already spoke on that, have some concerns over that. I listed out some of these concerns. Later, so it has the board of supervisor agenda meeting for the twenty third of January, then the one for today, which is right now, February sixth, and those are some of the items that I wanted you to consider when you're looking at your discussion and information only, or for you to look at later, before you have your decision, whenever that comes back, before you as the board to make a decision on the synergy contract moving forward. Some of the things. You, you can see, so you can read it for yourself later. I don't have the time to go over all the, the points there, but a few concerns that I had specifically was, you know, the word diesel, I looked up the word diesel in that synergy, synergy contract, and it's actually only used once, if you can look at that there, it's listed only one time on, on the item number six, on the, under the contract where it says that the county shall require. A purchase of minimum of twenty five hundred gallons of diesel per month. It's the only time diesel is used, not even used for, within the contract language to say this is for a diesel fuel tank specifically, or for diesel fuel only. This tank, another concern where it's listed there on number six, it says the county would be obligated to twenty five hundred gallons of diesel per month. However, the recommendation at the last board meeting was that we're going down from eight thousand to two thousand gallon tank. Doesn't make a lot of sense, and we're gonna drop to two thousand gallon tank, and I think Supervisor Gomez asked that question about reducing it and why. Mister Lunt, he followed up, Chairman Lunt followed up with, with that required more, you know, visits, and yes, it would, the frequency would, would, would be more so. Anytime you have more frequency, those are other charges, split tanks are more charges and things like that. I did notice also, it says here that there is a. Down lower says, do you have, I'm asking the question, do you have the quote unquote pricing and payment terms as specified in number five of the contracts? If you look at number five, it says that everything's in line with the payment and pricing and payment terms. However, that's not listed here. I don't know if you have that. I am requesting it if you, if you be so obliged, I'm requesting to see that. Pricing and payment terms, because I believe that does talk about, you know, trip charges, split charges, those types of things. I think this would be more costly in the long run. And then at the end, you can see that I'm just reminding the hundred and ten allocation, hundred and ten thousand dollar allocation to share his fuel budget and that. You know, it makes sense to shop local, he gets talked about the rhetoric of shop local, buy local, support local, and I talked to many local business owners in the last two weeks since the last meeting and. And they're, they're not too pleased knowing that we wouldn't be able to support local business by buying fuel from them locally. So anyways, this is all the time I have. And if you have any more questions for me, I'd be more than willing to speak with you, if one of you wants to call me one on one and speak and ask any, any questions, I'd be more than happy to do that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in call to the public? Okay, seeing none, we'll go to agenda item two. The board of supervisors convene as the board of directors of the Green County Public Health Service District, and after the order of business will reconvene as the board of supervisors. A consent agenda.
I saw move that we approve the consent agenda's posted.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors and the board of supervisors convene as the board of directors of the Green County Flood Control District. And after the order of business, we'll reconvene as the board of supervisors. A consent agenda.
I saw move that we approve the consent agenda's posted. I'll second that.
Yeah, motion and second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We are now convened as the board of supervisors and we will go to agenda item four. Mister Reed Larson, county engineer. Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. I have a couple of agenda items for you this morning, both related. To the airport. We're putting our. Relatively new engineering consultant to work. Their first task order was for some. Construction management services for the. For our drainage project at the airport. And we had a pre-construction meeting for that project. With Mister Manous recently and are moving forward with that. The, the two agenda items. In front of you today, the first one. Is for Dibble to. Design new runway lighting. About almost a year ago, we, the board accepted a grant from through ADOT, it's federal money through ADOT. To replace that lighting, which is, it's a much needed improvement. This grant will, will use this grant money to design the project. And quite a bit of the budget. Is for Dibble to use an electrical engineering sub consultant. That specializes in runway lighting. And. So we'll get the project designed and then at some future time. We will, we'll get. Additional grant money to actually do the construction.
Reed, when they, when they run that lighting and the engineering design. What are some of the complexities that, that, that the engineer has to address in, in. Redesigning lighting system for an airport or runway?
Yeah, you're, you're really. Getting me out of my comfort zone with that question.
That's his whole point.
I'll, I'll back my way into the answer. I was out there fooling around. Popping open the big. The vaults underground and my idea was to run line tower. From the existing E house, electrical house. Over to the new Coors base. And Tony reminded me, he said, hey, those conductors in there are five thousand volts. And I said, oh, wow. And I closed those vaults up and I've never been back. But so one of those is, is that each of those lights has to maintain the same. I don't know, luminosity or brilliant.
Brightness.
The one at the end of the runway has to be just as bright as the one that's closest to the E house. And one of the ways they do that is they goose the voltage way up by switching to LED lighting. That's not as critical. And so one of the questions they need to decide is whether we can reuse. Our existing, or, or we should reuse the existing. Step up transformer in that E house. That boosts stuff up to five thousand volts. So there's a lot of work to be done on the electrical side of things. To ensure that it functions as intended. And then, and we're also concerned about the existing conductors. So there's, there's money in there to evaluate the existing conductors, which are quite old and, and may just the wire running.
Right, I mean.
Conduit, that may need to be replaced. And if it does, that, that'll, that'll be a significant expense during construction.
But can they, they can use the existing conduit? I mean, the conduit is probably real heavy.
Yeah, we, there's a little bit of work to do. On one of the vaults out near the runway, I encountered a rat. That had made his home in there, and that's not a good idea because they'll chew the insulation. Off the conductor and then get a. The shock of their life, no fun in it. So we gotta figure out how to rat proof. Those conduit runs. And the vaults that they terminate at.
Thank you. I mean, I didn't, my point was to make you uncomfortable, you just. That's a lot of money for, and, and I understand. Everything has to function.
And, and to be completely candid with you gentlemen, when we, when we got these grants, I thought the money would be for construction. And we would spend a portion of it. For design and the rest of it on construction. And I asked the state engineer, state airport engineer. I was concerned about the budget. And. I said, what happens if we run out of money? Can we re-sculpt the project? He said, yeah, you could. But the way it turns out, we're gonna end up using pretty much this entire. Grant for the design. And then go pursue additional grant money for the construction. And it's, it seems expensive to me too, on the surface. But airport engineering is just expensive by nature. And part of that is all of the interface that you do with FAA and ADOT. And there, there's a, there's a paperwork side to it that's labor and time intensive. And that's reflected in the, in the budget of these consultants.
Any other?
No, you, you answered my questions. I had a couple in my head, but your, your. Response to. The chairman, I, I, I got my answers, so thank you.
I, I just have one.
Yeah.
Question.
Is everything that's there right now all original, the original?
Yes. To the best of my knowledge, I wish Tony was here to weigh in on that, but to the best of my knowledge, it is. Um, Derek.
Which is roughly how old?
Pardon?
Roughly how old would that be then? How long was that airport?
I do not know.
You know that, Derek?
When the lighting.
It predates my brother's county attorney, so that's going back nearly thirty years.
Years.
Yeah. Yeah. Thirty or forty. I remember early on in my career as county, as the elected county attorney, an issue came up with lighting and I, I don't remember what it was. But, but as far as I know, there may have been. Fixure changes. I think we've changed fixtures, but the, this basic infrastructure that's in the ground, I think has been there for decades.
I was just curious.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, a motion would be in order.
Well, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I saw move that we approved, oh shoot, I just lost my page. I saw move that we approved. The task order number two with Dibble for design services for the grant funded airport medium. In density runway lighting replacement project in the amount of. Should it be not to exceed ninety eight thousand seventy nine dollars and forty cents?
Second?
Okay, we have motion and second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We'll now go to four B.
Gentlemen, for this agenda item, I'm gonna. Austin got a PowerPoint and. Supervisor Campbell, if you have really, really, really good eyesight, we may be able to figure out from this when the runway is. But I'm not optimistic. But this is, these are just. We're gonna go back in time. I'm gonna work you through a little bit of the history of the airport. And all, all these are, are, are Google photos from Google Earth over time, so this, this shows you what the airport looked like in nineteen ninety seven.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, kind of remember the shape of that concrete apron, the way in and a few slides later, go ahead and. In two thousand and three, you can see they re-aligned the entrance. ADOT doesn't like flying wide into two, so they made that more of a thank you right there. And they also added a segmented circle over there with the windsock in the middle of it. Keep going. Not, not show those two improvements, go next slide. So. Yeah, somewhere by two thousand and seven. We constructed. The first portion, call it eighty one if you want, of the taxiway. Prior to that. When you were getting ready to take off, you would. You would taxi out to the runway from your apron and take your chances with any planes that were. Coming in. And then you just, they, the pilots chatter over radio, so that's all the voice, trying to reach each other, but. But they, they built that segment of the taxiway by two thousand and seven. That day, I'm not sure, Austin, go ahead. And by twenty ten, it's not a great photo, but you can see they chopped off that concrete apron. And they did that to, to continue that paved taxiway all the way over to the beginning of runway seven. So by twenty ten, that whole taxiway was replaced, they often. Twenty eleven, I'm just showing that in here because it's a, it's a better, a little bit better photo, and there's better contrast to show that taxiway parallel. To the runway, next slide. I, I included this one because it's another pretty good photo with big contrast, but this shows, you can see, Freeport installed their parking up against State Route seventy eight. Excellent. This is the zoom in of the slide you saw earlier, and I just wanted to point out, this was the original taxiway. You see signs of trouble in it. And you see this cracking. That's happening along the taxiway. And it's been cracked sealed there, which is why it's, except that flag goes there. And then twenty nineteen, I just wanna show this, your big beautiful shop was completed. By that point, and it shows up in the aerial photos. Then we'll get pretty close to the present time. I like this one, we, a couple of years ago, we completed a, a payment preservation project on a runway. And it's just a. It doesn't do anything structurally, or it just protects your investment and your deed, but it really pops. After it's structurally applied, applied, and you see the runway markings.
Will, will there, with, with the deterioration, with the cracking and stuff, with this? Will that alleviate, alleviate that for several years or, or? This surface, or is it just cosmetic?
This silco, if you were to put that over. This taxiway that has those issues. With the cracking, you'll do absolutely nothing. For that cracking.
Okay, so structurally it.
Yeah.
It's cosmetic then, really?
And go to the next slide, Austin, which is probably almost the last one. So this is the, similar to the other side, this just zoomed in real tight on twenty twenty two, you can see.
Wow.
Tony went out and cracked sealed those cracks yet again. And that's very recent, but you can see the issue with it in there.
Some of those are six inches. Wide.
So go the next slide, Austin. So the project that we're presenting to you for Dibble to design is. We, we got money from. Through ADOT. To Silco, the entire taxiway. And every color that you see of it, except for the green, is gonna be done under one project. That's gonna be administered by Kim Lee Horn. And it's a really neat project because it doesn't require. Any resources from Green County. We don't have to pay our. Engineering consultant to administer it. It's all handled by Kim Lee Horn. And we actually had a pre-bid meeting for that, that nobody showed up to. Which wasn't unusual, they didn't expect them to, they just moved it ahead of the. For the. To the, just to meet their requirements. But Kim Lee Horn is currently scheduling that work. With the contractors. And they go around and hit several airports. In succession, and that's weather dependent. You, it can't be too cold when you fly down, so. So that's everything but the green. The green is what you have in front of you. And I just wanna point out to you that that is the area where they built the phase one taxiway that they built. And my humble opinion, they probably didn't do enough geotech. Investigation. And, and, and if they would have, they probably would have constructed that taxiway differently. They would have overexcavated some of that nasty native material. If you see my boots out in the hallway. I'm in there wearing my socks in my office and it's, and you know that I could have spent at the airport. That material is nasty. And they did better job over here. They're cracking, you see cracking there, but it's not structural like it is over here. So. Dibble is gonna spend quite a bit of the budget that you see in front of you on a geotech engineer. And they're gonna drill about thirty five. Bolts up and down that taxiway to get a really, really good sense of. What, what's below there? And. What's gonna happen is, we're not gonna do a silco on that portion of the taxiway, we're gonna have to reconstruct it, so we're gonna have to go look for. Funds to do that, but. But again, a, a big portion of the cost in this. Task order for Dibble is gonna flow through them to a geotech sub. And that, that probably should have happened again. Back at the beginning.
Is, is, is that, is that coming out of the task order number three?
Yes.
And so really they'll. They'll demolish. The existing, go in, put a base in. That should have been put in the first place, and that's why the testing and then reconstruct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or they might line stabilize what's there. They, if you dig it up and mix it with lime, it, it kills the plasticity in it and makes it suitable for some base, so that would be an option. And, and they'll explore. Whether the material would respond adequately to line stabilization, but that would, that, that'll be one of the options that they looked at.
But if you have six inch crack, is, is that? Is, is that earth out there walking? I mean, you know, because of the different. Moisture content.
Uh huh, yeah.
We call it walking and.
Yep, the, the changes in moisture. In, in a clayey soil. Create, create tremendous, tremendous pressures and, and expand, the soil expands. And it just pushes the pavement on top of it apart.
If you're flying, I don't wanna have my tire fall in my.
That's just on the taxiway.
Now we're used to all the roads that are around here, that's how they all are.
We have had pilots over the years complain about that before twenty digit crack seal last year. We got not infrequent complaints, often by those who are flying in executives for the company. Saying, you know, they're gonna lose a tire and, and they were big, they were big.
Yeah. It's amazing how.
And I, I think. If I remember, I, Freeport provided some assistance.
They did. They, they helped tremendously on the crack seal project and, and. And the concerns, we've not heard as many, but it's not a long-term fix.
Oh. You feel the crack and it did. But as long as that ground's walking until you get down and into the, and build a, you know, a base. I don't care what you do, you.
That's just like anything, you need a good foundation.
Any other questions?
No.
Well, if not, a, a motion would be in order.
I moved that we approved of a task order number three with Dibble for the design services for the grant funded airport taxiway rehabilitation project in the amount not to exceed one hundred thousand five seventy five point sixty.
I second that motion.
We have a motion and second, is there? You have a motion second, is there any further discussion? Hearing that, we'll proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mister Larson, we appreciate. We will now, excuse me, we will now go to agenda item five, Mister Repair.
Thank you, um, I listed this as discussion and information only, um. We have, have been learning quite a bit about our, our fuel contract, we've had synergy as an exclusive supplier for many, many years. Um, and to give you a little bit of background and, and how it's affecting our, our analysis. Prior to synergy, um, we had another uh, fuel jobber that would come out and supply, and it was not. Not infrequently, they would leave us dry, um, typically out at the landfill in particular, um, and so. When synergy began to, to services, while it's a requirements contract, it was also a keep full contract. So that's somewhat both sides of, of the same coin. Um. The thing that, that first caught my attention about the contract was the five-year period and the requirements. So requirements basically says, um, anything you need, we will supply as long as it's in our product line. A, there's also a, um, an output contract that where someone would take all that someone produces, that's not what we're concerned about. So in this case, signing this contract. Um, one could interpret it as having applied only to the diesel tank there in Duncan. Except, as Sheriff pointed out, there's a provision that talks about twenty-five hundred gallons a month. Um. We don't use twenty-five hundred gallons a month in that tank alone. So that would suggest that the contract would be for all of our stuff, which would basically. Codify in a contract what we're already doing. Um, we have been approached about a month ago, uh, by a different supplier. Um, who wanted to uh, supply Greenie County, it's a small supplier. Um, and looking to expand, but not very much, they, they don't wanna become a regional supplier, they wanna have a few customers and, and that's it. Um, Tony reached out to, to the contact for this supplier, talked to them, they also can supply tanks. Um, we can purchase the tank as opposed to uh, having the synergy continue to own the tank. The cost is less, this contract talks about a, a, an agreed upon price for the tank. The cost of the tank for this other supplier would be less, it doesn't have a pump, nor does it have a uh, electronic monitoring system. So one of the things that we get with synergy is that not only do they come out and keep us full. But if they're in the area and they know how low our tanks are. They can then say, uh, by the way, we've got part of a tanker, can we empty it into your tanks? So that way we remain full and they, they don't, you know, go home with, with fuel. Um, it's been very uh, helpful to both sides in that regard. One of the challenges that, well, there's two, two primary points that we want to consider as, as we come back eventually with the recommendation. One is price, obviously, and that's price for tanks, pumps, monitors, the whole nine yards. But also reliability, we don't wanna find ourselves in a situation where we are needing fuel and we can't get it. Um. By locking into a five-year contract, we are at somewhat the whim of, of that supplier for five years, there's not a competitive. Aspect of the contract. Um, let me address the local, uh, buy local, keep it local. We've been through this before on several other contract types over the years, I've advised the board when I was the county attorney, we've gone through this over and over again. State procurement laws don't give a local first. Um, th- there, there's not anything in statute that allows you to consider that solely because they're a local supplier. And we're not the only county that goes through this, um, I, I visit with my colleagues, particularly the small counties, this is a pressure that all counties get frequently. Um. Can a local or more closely geographically located supplier, could that be considered? Yes, in the right con- context, that might be something to consider. For example, um, if we had to take all of the cars we purchased at the Phoenix or Tucson Metro to be serviced or repaired. That adds a cost, and so as we look at, at purchasing, if we're within a reasonable price. And the local, local supplier can supply that vehicle. We can look over the course of that contract and realize we're gonna save money by taking it down the street instead of down to Phoenix. Those types of things are perfectly appropriate for a board to consider, but they are only one factor. And in this case, where we have access to bulk fuel, I'm not certain that the local supplier overcomes the lowest and best requirement of the statutes. Um. But I also contacted Graham County and asked you, how do you do this, how do you get your fuel? We have um, four total fueling stations and I think the biggest tanks we have are eight, ten thousand range. Um. Graham County has two twenty thousand gallon tanks and then two one thousand gallon tanks. And so as they begin to run low, what they have done traditionally is they put out an email to a list of about seven or eight suppliers. And say, what's your price, send it within eight hours. And then they award, they used to award that bid the following day, and then that, that supplier would come and, and fill their tanks. Um, more recently, not all of those suppliers are responding, they just don't answer the call. Whether that's because they don't have the capacity or they don't need Graham County's business, we're not sure. So more recently, they, they shortened it and they contact the same suppliers, they get responses from only two or three at most. But they, they expect a price quote within three hours and they award the bid same day they put it out. Um. I'm not certain we're set up to do that just yet. Um, but it does speak, th- they're, they're adapting to a smaller supply group. Tells me something, it, it's not uncommon, we found this in other contexts. That simply coming over the mountain or up from I ten or whatever to Greenie County, some suppliers don't wanna do it. And, and so our, our list of potential suppliers may be smaller than Graham County's. The reason we're not ready to make a recommendation now is I think we need to contact some of these other suppliers and find out what they might do. Even if we find ourselves locked into a multi-year contract, which may be a very good thing for the reliability aspect of this. Um. This is an opportunity for us to go back and find out what the market is right now. Um, synergy may well turn out to be the best option we have. But we need to do some more exploration, whether this other supplier that has approached us. Or whether other suppliers that are out there, I also took a chance to visit with Chairman Lunt when they were purchasing fuel for the dairy. When they, they had to get a huge tank so they could take an entire tanker full of fuel. And then they would call up suppliers and find who could meet it at what price. Um. No doubt the market has changed, we went back, um, we've not been able to find our older synergy contracts, and it may well be that they're simply. Uh, one, they didn't exist, we didn't ever have one. But, but whatever we have, we've been using synergy since. About the time Tony became the head of our public works department, so it's been several, several years. Um, more than five years that this contract um, would require. Um, maybe five years is good, maybe three years is good, maybe we negotiate that it applies just to this tank and not all our other tanks. There's lots of ways to do it, and we simply have not covered all of the ground yet. But, but a lot of what the sheriff has raised, we are also asking those questions. And um, as far as just instructing people to go out and buy, buy fuel wherever they can get it. Um, one of the concerns is, is, and the sheriff pointed this out, is that. Yes, local dealers may want to have an officer show up at their business every so often, that gives an air of protection and so forth. And it begins to invade into improper contract uh, negotiations, we, we don't. We don't um, patronize business so that they have greater law enforcement presence than other places. Um, but in short, we need, we do need to look at all options, and while there is, uh, and I've made this clear to the sheriff that if, if. The availability of fuel is not there for broken equipment or whatever the case may be, of course they can get fuel. We don't want them parked on the side of the road with no gas to do their job, and of course they can do that, but once. A fuel supply is determined by the board, and you decide we're gonna go this way or that way, then that's the way we're gonna go. Those, those tanks are available to officers twenty-four seven. They can, they can fuel up and most of the officers during the course of shift are up and down the county. Uh, so we have access, a three-way access at, at Clifton, and so, um. Availability of fuel is really not an issue. Uh, convenience, maybe, but convenience can be planned for. And so, uh, we will come back to the board of the recommendation of, of where we think we should go. Um, but I, I did promise the board that we would update you on what we'd found out. And what we found out is there's, there's more yarn unwinding from the ball than we thought at initially.
Of course.
Go, go ahead.
In regards to the synergy.
Yes.
Uh. Does Graham deal with synergy?
They were not on their list of suppliers that, that they sent me.
That's, who, who provides diesel through the mine? Synergy, you know, do we know synergy yet?
That was one thing I was gonna mention, I think it's important to note that synergy is in Greenlee County multiple times on a daily basis. So it's not like they're coming from Tucson or something just for Greenlee County.
And that speaks loudly to the reliability aspect, they're here all the time.
One, one, one last thing, uh. You say there's another supplier here that, that's lower than what synergy is or claims to be. Is, is, and you said it doesn't include the pump or the monitoring. Uh. If we were to buy our own tank. Buy our own pump, our own monitor, where do they come in where synergy is?
Wait, so we don't know the exact price, and, and part of the challenge is that that price can change literally day, day by day for fuel. So, so Tony was gonna go back to this other supplier and, and try and get some idea of what pricing is. What would you have been your price on this date or this date or this date so we can compare? Um, this is more, um. Hunch than, than evidence-based at this point, but my guess is over time, there won't be a whole lot of difference. The fuel market is tremendously competitive, it's extremely competitive on the retail side. In fact, most um, outlets will let you, will tell you that it's to get you in the store. As opposed to making, they make money on it, they're not losing money, but that's not, they use that as a way to get you in the store. Um. But on the wholesale side, um, likewise, it's, it's competitive. Uh, as we discussed last time, Tony and I are both aware, um. That a lot of these, these fuel jobbers get their gas from the same super tank. In the same location, and, and then they put it in a Texaco truck or a Chevron truck or a circulate truck or whatever. Um.
But they don't pay the same. I mean, they might get it from the same place, but they don't pay the same, because incredibly, yes, incredibly dependent on volume.
Correct.
That, that's where.
And, and that's really where we're both, uh, where we have some of our disadvantage, we get some advantage because they are the supplier to the mine. But, but yes, you're gonna get a price break if you buy it by the tanker a day as opposed to the tanker a week or tanker a month.
And, and Ron, does, does the mine deal with somebody else besides synergy, is there, is there a couple of suppliers? Wow, that's. That, that in itself, I mean, they're coming in here, and will continue to come in here, I mean. That's a no-brainer. Let, let me ask you, did, on, on, on the pricing of the fuel. Is, is, is that dependent? On the spot market plus a, 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 a margin or, or how is it priced when we buy it? Fuel. Is, is it by that day because it, uh, and, and then this is a, an exclusive contract if I read it. You can't have anybody out, and so what guarantees the county? That we're getting a, a good price? Because if we, we can't have competitors. Because we've signed a five-year deal, what guarantees us that? There.
We, we don't. Um, we don't, we, I mean, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a different price than, than the mine, because they're not buying it in the.
Correct, I understand that.
But, but, and, and one of the things we do need to delve into is say, how do you set your pricing? Cause if it is our cost plus ten percent. Then, then I'm assuming they're gonna get the same price as any other supplier, although that may not be true, we know, for example, everybody travels to Tucson. Prices are routinely twenty to fifty cents a gallon cheaper than they are in the Phoenix metro. Uh, for some reason, Saffron right now is twenty cents cheaper than here or Globe. And, and I don't know the, the fuel market well enough to know why those differences exist. Globe used to be the low cost, you know, uh, small town all over, you know, this part of the state. Um, you get to New Mexico, every gallon over there is twenty to thirty, forty cents cheaper than it is uh, here. You go in Lordsburg, you go down about fourteen miles to a place called Road Forks, and it's twenty cents cheaper there. Um. I, I, I don't have a good answer for that.
How, Derek, how long has Graham been doing what they do, or you say they, you know, shoot out all these emails to all these suppliers? And then they go for the, the lowest, the lowest rate?
Lowest at the moment?
Yeah.
They've been doing that on, where they just give them eight hours to do it, they've been doing that for some years, the, the getting it down to just three hours has been. Uh, within the last year or two. Um, I'll, I can follow up on that and get some more information about how they've done that. Um, and I, I'd like to find out more about their relationship with the various suppliers. Again, they, they probably use close to double the fuel that we do.
Oh, yeah, and, and of course, would that, would that, uh, business wanna come all the way over here even though it's only forty-five miles over there?
Right, and, and, and uh, I know one of those that come to mind right, right off the top of my head was a pilot. Um, you know, wholesaler, so I am assuming they supply the pilot stations up and down the freeways. Um, but, but I don't, I don't know the mechanics, the, the person who runs that for them, I, I spoke with my counterpart, um, Dustin Welker. Who put me in touch with their, their uh, person who manages their fuel, so we'll, we'll get more information from them.
Sure.
Uh, but I'm, I'm certain that, you know, like I say, synergy being here all the time, for them, it's very little to just come drop off with us. And our tanks are relatively small.
And just to, with synergy, if we were to enter into this five-year agreement, there is a clause that says that you can cancel with a ninety-day notice. So it's not like we're locked in.
Well, well, but the, when I read that thing, it was, it was.
Is that after? But here, after the five years, then you gotta give ninety days notice, um, and it's.
Oh, after six months.
As I, as I read it, we will certainly go back and look at that more closely.
Okay, yeah, we'll look into that.
But, um. But yeah. The other, the other thing I wanna know for certain is what is their product line, like I said, we, we per- currently purchase things like uh, oil, motor oil. Uh, other lubricants and other, you know, fluids for cars from a different supplier, I don't think that synergy supplies that. But we would want to know what their product line is, we, we also get both regular diesel for our patrol cars and others, and then we purchase red dye diesel for our heavy equipment. It's used off-road. Um, so we really have at least three products we purchase from them.
Good.
So, yeah, I, I thought this would be much more simple when we dove, dove off into it, it's, it's not as simple as I, I originally anticipated.
See, yeah, I mean. Graham County, I mean, they, they, a- and there again. The day that they put out bids, a week later, there, fuel might be down, but, but that's just the way, I mean, that's the way they is, and I understand that.
How sometimes the fuel in our tank, we, we did a, a spot check one day and the fuel in our tank, I think was two eighty-seven and everything else around was. Three thirty-five or something, it was dramatic difference. But the next time we may come in and we're, until that tank goes out, we may be five cents a gallon higher than the local retail spot. Over time. I think we're gonna save money over, over the long haul, but on any, on a given day. Yeah, it, it, it's whatever the market is that day.
I'm just extremely curious. If, if it's, you know. An all-inclusive. Then what guarantee? Do we have that we're, we're getting a good deal on what we're buying? That, uh, it, that bothers me because leave with us, we would, we, we would spot check and, and of course we were buying. Just a tanker. And man, sometimes there was seven or eight hundred dollars difference in, and, and delivered.
It would be difficult as well, because like even if we compared to Graham County, say, well, what was your price on such and such a day?
It changes.
Well, not only will it change, but it may also well be that, that they're getting it at forty thousand gallons at a time and we're getting ten.
Yeah.
And so.
Oh, I, like I say, that's why we went to the tanker because. He, there was a big break and, 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 you know. Wish we didn't have the monitors and stuff, but I.
I just, I just wanna update you what we have been doing and that, and that we're gonna continue to chase some of this stuff down and see if, if there's a better way to do this. So.
Yeah, and please check out what. What uh, guarantees where we have that. How they're pricing.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Cause that, that's important, I think.
Will do. And you wanna take that break that we talked about?
Yes, yes, um, we'll take a, hopefully I can do it in ten minutes and. I've got a. So we'll come back at it at. Five P O.
Sound good.
We're back on, okay. We'll call this meeting back to order and. We were through with agenda item five, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we will now go into agenda item six and I apologize for that inconvenience. We will go to a budget work session, housing and economic development.
So gentlemen, I want to get this out early before we even actually start the budget process, if you will. To to give the board a chance to think about how we do what we have been doing and whether we want to change our focus. So. In in the current fiscal year, we budgeted one hundred twenty two thousand dollars for economic development that included salary and and E R Es and included some. Lots of money to be able to put on events or you know. Do the things that we do in economic development. Our focus for the last couple of years in economic development in particular has been on housing. It's not been exclusive, but it's we've pivoted towards housing. Interestingly, you may recall recently that the Arizona Commerce Authority, which. For lack of a better term, is sort of the state's version of the Economic Development Department for the state. Has come under some heat for some of their expenditures. There was an Arizona Republic article that talked about how they sponsored some executives to some Super Bowl events last year. And there's there's a debate that's now going on in the state, not just at the state level, but also the county of. Of what is the appropriate use of economic development dollars? Can you take someone to lunch or dinner to an event? The question was recently posed about, you know, the economic development in many cases for many entities is. Attracting businesses and how do you attract them? They attract their recruiters and their executives and so forth. But but over the the past. Really probably close to twenty years. You go back, I think the first economic development coordinator we hired was Tonya Williams. And that was early in my ten years county attorney. So so we're going back twenty years plus. But we've had a multi. Pointed approach to economic development. We've we've at times focused on tourism. We've at times focused on. Small business development at times. Only recently has housing become more of a focus. We focused on advertising. We've actually paid for advertisements in the Tucson market to try and and draw people to our area. Economic development, particularly in those areas, is very difficult to measure. It's hard to say whether or not an event or a our attendance at some event out of county. Has brought more dollars into the county. It is just difficult to do, even when businesses do begin. It's it's difficult to say. They made the decision to set up shop here because of something we did. It's hard to measure. There are some objectives you can measure. But it's difficult to measure. As we pivoted towards housing, I I listed this together. The question I would like to ask the board to consider, and I I'm not looking for a direction today. I would like the board to take some time to give us some consideration. Do we change our focus and how we spend economic development dollars? More towards a real estate, home building, neighborhood building focus per se. With that, we have spent. Better part of two years. Looking very heavily at Tyler Farms. We've invested a tremendous amount of resources internally. We spent some resources externally to try and and. Get that to a point where something can be done with it. We're to the point at the moment. And and as far as I can see. We're kind of at the end. We've exhausted all that the county can do for Tyler Farms. Private investors may may do something differently. They could approach the project differently. But as far as we can go, we're we're kind of at the end of that road. Do we now pivot and try to identify state land that we can purchase? That too will take some time and effort, both internal resources as well as external resources to do. That may be a good thing. Maybe we want to identify currently privately owned land. That would be better suited. Legally for water to to develop or to assist in development. One of the other questions that that would be tremendously helpful for us as staff. Is to define what the county's role in this could be. We we can, there are county entities. I hope that's thunder or something. It's a lot of rumbling out there. But there are county entities that I'm aware of, both in Arizona as well as in other states that have built apartment complexes, for example. On on one end of the the spectrum. On the other end of the spectrum, there are there are entities that will say. It's not our job to build an economy, housing or otherwise. And then there's a million policy points in between. Where entities can can do things. One of the things that Reed would point out periodically, we talked about tighter farms is. One area where county can be very helpful is to interface with A dot. Let's suppose you were able to build three hundred homes or five hundred homes back there. That road in front of Tyler Farms would have to been redesigned and the county is well suited to help in that process. Even though we're not building houses. We can help in making that place accessible. Other things we can do, we have. Without without a close second. The most easily accessible permitting process I think of any county in the state. That helps. And we talked to one developer at one point who who literally had to ask twice. When asked about our cost of a permit, he could not believe. Our cost of a permit. And and I think he would be equally shocked to find out that if you're well prepared and come in, you could get a permit the same day, maybe even the same hour as you walk in. Those are things that the county can clearly do that really help grease the skids for development. Zoning is another area where where if an area is identified, zoning could be pre-zoned. To a a housing friendly zoning overlay. So there are certainly things we can do, but one of the challenges we've had is we've been a bit all over the map in what we've attempted to do. Particularly as staff, we we spend a lot of time, you know, looking at how far down the housing road we can get. We've spent a lot of time and it's very well spent learning more about. Low income or affordable housing options and funding for some of that. We learned, for example, that it's it's very helpful to a degree. But we're not likely to get the the U S D A to to build all of the infrastructure for an entire housing development if only a portion of it is. Geared towards affordable housing. But what I'd like, I my ask of the board is that you take some time and think about. Where do we want to go? Both with housing, what kind of involvement do we want to have? So that as we articulate a more clearly defined policy, we can then. Marshall resources and focus resources to achieve that policy objective. And. One of the policy components may well be, how do we manage economic development per se? We ended up sort of by process of gravity sucking most of the resources out of anything tourism or small business development and into. Housing in the last couple of years because it it took, there was a large learning curve for us and. We're we're better off for the learning, but it did take a lot of resources. As we move forward, we may want to go back and revisit the concept of a housing authority where where you have. An entity. A little more nimble than than county government. And a lot more expertise in house to help answer some of the questions and be bring better recommendations more quickly to the board. For those areas where the where the board would need to give policy direction. I'm certainly not trying to limit discussion today, but I wanted to be out here far enough in advance that we can think about. And have a more cohesive, more effective policy towards both economic development and housing. They may be one of the same for the next period of time and they may not be. Tourism. We've tried efforts. Like you say, it's it's hard to say whether or not people eating at the cafe down the hill or. We know most of them when we walk in there, but how many are from out of town visiting or just, we don't know. It's difficult for us to capture a lot of tourism dollars. We have a limited number of hotel beds. We have a limited number of eateries. It'd be nice if Cabela's would establish a a satellite office, you know, just here below the the trail. But. But that's that's an area where. And tourism is unlikely to ever be a a valid. Substitute if the mine ever leaves. It it's just not going to be a a one for one trade. Recently, I was visiting with Martha Luhana at F M I. They are still very interested. They're working on a resiliency plan. And we've we've kind of lost touch as we as we lost our full time economic development person. But they want to be thinking fifty seventy five years in advance. So if and when the mine is no longer here. What's left? And and that's a resilience program. Is that part of our economic development strategy and vision? At this point, I don't know. The other components we we spent some time on or have tried to spend some time on, we we find ourselves resource poor. Is things like the the brochures that two of the three of you have brought to us saying, hey, this is a valuable piece of information. We agree. Finding the 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 time and personnel to produce that has been more of a challenge than we anticipated. Particularly in light of other projects we're working on and trying to get. Completed as we promised you we would. Like I say, I'm not certainly trying to. Quell discussion. What I am trying to do is spur thought. So that in future discussions. Perhaps we can be more effective in our economic development and housing support efforts.
Any thoughts?
My wheels are spinning.
Good, that was the whole point.
Well, you know, to me and and. I've had the advantage. You know. Workforce and housing are hand in hand with 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 the major employer. And so. First of all, I want to make sure we we used to have updates. The mind we met with with. We used to meet with the vice president, you know, at least once or twice a year. So there was communication. We knew what was going on and. And housing is a big. Is a big problem for them. If they had housing for employees. You know, and and I understand they don't want to. They they don't want to get into housing because they're miners. They want to. And that's true. And so. Me. I would like. Somehow, if if it needs to be, we need housing, then in order to have housing, there's got to be land available. With with sufficient water.
Legal and physical water.
And 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 to me, we would. Help the efforts of the county. The most by pursuing. Those properties where because. For years, no one was selling land. And now in the last three years, all anytime any piece of land has become available, someone's built a house on it. So. And this is just Richard. Thinking, but. And so if we could secure land, whether it be state, we we've we've tried Tyler, that it's. The. Tribes attorneys are. Are just way ahead of us and they're. I I just don't believe that water will ever become available. For housing. I just. I used to think the tribes wanted. You know, their share. I'm beginning to believe, and this is a Richardism. That they want it all. And 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 that's that's a detriment. To this county. And and for our growth. And so if we can pursue. If we can't get a private ground, then let's pursue state land. That we know that has water and I understand we we will have to spend some money. But if we can, if we can secure. Some state land and get it where it can be developed. And houses can be built on it and there's security of water and there's security that that. That water won't be taken away from. To me, that's the best thing we can do for. The county and it's the best thing we can do for our partner up there on the hill. And and we need. But we need to do it together. And that's my two bits, guys, and.
But I I. Absolutely support what you were saying and and I think that, you know, you mentioned where do we? You know, where do we commit our focus? And I think housing has to be at the number one forefront of our of our discussions. I mean, we've been at a. Housing list up on the hill, you know. Nine hundred plus, you know, approaching a thousand for five years. So we have. We know that there is a demand and there's a continued demand and and we know that we have a partner up on the hill that. That. Is willing to work with us. And so whatever we can do, I do think that, you know, small business is very important to the community as well. I think. You know, tourism is something that you we have a tourism council and we can be supportive of them. Let them stay in their lane. We stay in ours, but we can be supportive of that. But yeah, small business development is is. Is huge, but but our number one has to be has to be housing and maybe there are. Local. You know, property owners that 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 have property. With water rights, et cetera, that we might be able to partner with and and. Develop. But yeah, going after state land, I think is is great. We've been down that. We've tried that and we we get, but but we should continue to try that, right? And and leadership changes there. Their focus changes. I think we need to continue to. To knock on that door and see what we can get, but I think that's.
That out of the three wave that we build all that. That that was state land. And look what we've been able to do with that. Now we need to do. It for for some type of housing and and. David and I talked with Robin Said, who is. Acting, whatever they are.
Over there. Executive.
Anyway, and she. We we need to have a a meeting with her and and because I we need to get that ball rolling.
She she came up to visit last year.
Yeah. Yeah, and then David and I, yeah, yeah. And then she was, she presented at C S A and David and I went out and talked to her afterwards.
And she said, come and see me. So. Not to cut out what you're saying, but I I totally agree. And I think that we need to be at the table with our folks up on top of the hill up there because. I mean, that's a revolving door that's going on up there where they can't keep people here because there's no place to live. There's no homes and we got to get. We got to get moving. I agree. I agree to a degree on Tyler Farms. I I still haven't given up on that, but you know, that's me, okay? And but I I honestly think that. State land, you know, I've approached the water company in Roma Linda and Verdi Lee and. And it's not like the water company that was there before that said that that that. Couldn't. Provide them and tell them that they had capacity to furnish water to a couple of hundred homes up there. But this company that's there now says they can. So. Yes, we need to, we need to shift gears and. And not forget about what we've done here in the past, but we need to move on and and start looking at these other locations. Seriously.
And I think we need a more robust, you know, discussion.
I would just throw an idea.
No, but I think we we plan another work session to where we can sit down and throw out all the ideas and and try to get a develop a plan for the next year.
And and we need to continue being at the table with these folks up here because they were willing to partner with us even at Tyler Farms and and. You know very well, Derek, the last time you and I went and met with him, I asked that question when we walked away from there and and said, Tyler Farms. Disappears and we can't do anything there. Are you still willing to partner with us and? And on on the subject of housing and they said absolutely. So we just need to start moving.
No, I I appreciate the more robust discussion as well. Some stuff creates itself organically. If you had a location with three hundred homes. No doubt a convenience store with gas would would pop up. Someone would make that investment. Other things as well. But but certainly, I I know we've got this much clear direction. We're going to, we're going to pivot our primary focus towards state land at the moment, identifying parts. We've done that somewhat already. We'll do that and I will get a meeting set up with the state land director. And we're going to start having that conversation, but I appreciate the the appetite for a broader discussion of economic development. It's easy to chase the the next shiny object and and become so scattered in our efforts that we we end up with very little or nothing. For all of our efforts. And so if we if we have a stated focus, I I think we can. We can. Either run it to the end of its natural end. Or we can find where we can succeed and and define that better.
And and if there's opportunities for us to to have those discussions, especially if we're talking about state land. If there's folks besides, you know, besides Said. That we could talk to to help to influence or to make a difference, then let us know who that is so that we could.
Okay.
You know. Do that.
And and please, the reason I expressed my opinion so we would start. Thinking.
Yeah.
Because I I agree, we need. This is just, we're just throwing spitballs on the wall and hoping some of them stick and. You know, we've got to get a a target out there and.
Redefine our focus.
Doing some.
And there is a location that, you know, that was that was the miner's choice that I'm not going to bring up right now, but that's why we need to. Sit at the table with. Our partner up on top of the hill and have another discussion on that because I. Left him near the possibility of of natural gas and waters, the issue to this location where. I mean, it's not completely suitable, the land that's there, but there's there is a. Quite a bit of it that can be used for housing and. We just need to. Have discussions and continue the discussion. Don't let them die.
Not only do I want discussions. Even I want action.
And frankly, part of the reason I wanted to start this discussion because that there there is a lot to think about and a lot of very validly held positions on this. It's difficult for staff to accomplish much if if we don't know the policy objective we're we're trying to pursue. And so to the extent that we can define that, articulate that, it's much easier for us to then produce results. Towards a a an agreed upon objective. So. This has already been helpful. I I look forward to if I I certainly I'll be available to visit with you each one on one. And and we'll schedule follow up as soon as as you would like to, but. We will start pivoting some of our focus already based on what you've told us today.
You know, when I say discussion, it's just that we haven't had. The discussion with the folks up on top of the hill and some of these locations. That's what I'm talking about.
We need to set up.
Regular. Yeah, and we need to, we need to continue. We need to start that. Meeting regular. Yeah, as we did here recently. We spoke to.
Mr. Monge was here and and. And COVID, you know, and COVID caused a lot of that.
Yeah.
But but. I I guess direction. Derek, you want one of us to set up a meeting with Robin or or because I think that needs to happen sooner or later.
Make the call today.
Okay.
Yep. And if I if it if it appears to me at all that we need one of you to make that call, I will. That that's. I will go to you and and say, please make the call.
Because she has David's and I's cards and.
Hey. Be glad to.
All right.
That's all I have on that topic.
Anything else?
Want to tell me about it?
No. Okay. We will now go to agenda item seven. Derek and Bianca.
I'll be very brief on this right now. Really, this entire week. The only thing that's going to matter a whole lot is what they decide, if anything, on elections. There either way, it's going to be disruptive. If they do nothing, there's a very good chance the state will not be able to pull off its primary and. General elections timely and get stuff out to voters, particularly military overseas voters. For the general election. There's. Let's see, ninety one legislators, there's ninety one opinions about what needs to be fixed. Some are really strong about it, but they are meeting right now in a joint hearing. And there are proposed bills that appear to be a clean fix. We'll see what happens by Thursday, as as the speaker pointed out, Friday's too late because they all go home on Thursday. They can stay, but they don't.
Their minus three right now.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, they they're they're down three legislators, so they're only at eighty seven altogether. Having said that. There has not really been much talk about budgeting for the state level in the last couple of weeks. There's been focus on water. There's been focus on elections. A lot of both topics have had a lot of heat and rhetoric without a whole lot of action. There've been, I know on the election side, a lot of closed door meetings, behind the scenes meetings. They have not resulted in a in a. A single plan to go forward, but right now it looks most likely as though the primary election will move up from Ju- August sixth to July thirtieth. Is our best guess. That resets a whole bunch of other dates in the process. And and so I I know both Sherry and Bianca have been on on calls, conference calls and can email threads. We've talked about how we manage that. We are probably better suited than any other county to be able to manage. Different dates and recounts and so forth, simply because of our science. One solution was that was pitched yesterday and then up in the republic was that. We'll just hire more staff and we'll just get more. People, we'll just spend more money and get it done. Well, the money's not always there and frankly, hiring extra staff and extra people to do it hasn't been a solution. We we struggle every election cycle to get poll workers. And so. Like I said, we're probably in better position than than most, if not any, to to meet the the changing deadlines, but but that will be dominant. And as soon as they make a decision. Our elections folks will immediately kick in and begin to adjust accordingly. The other on the budget, we will wait till they begin to talk about budgets. But at this point. They they've kind of lost focus on that and I'm going to leave water. Primary supervisor lunch report, I suspect. Other than I I read yesterday, the governor has a plan, but she does not have a sponsor. So no one has introduced legislation that would embody the governor's plan. The upside to that, for those who didn't like her plan, is it will never get a legislative hearing. It will never pass because it won't be introduced. The downside to that is as she's already demonstrating with the Gila Bend watershed or the basin. She's willing to instruct her Department of Water Resources Director to start forming A M As. And the speculation is it won't stop if he the Gila. Ben basin, but we'll go into other areas of known water shortage and the groundwater. That's a bit of a frightening prospect. And so. With that, like I said, there's there's a lot of movement. There's a lot of hearings or a lot of bills being passed. Some of them just just crazy, like you got to license your flying car. I didn't know that was a problem that needed a solution, but apparently a committee passed that bill out of the committee last week. This kind of nonsense we see at this stage of the of the legislature each year. That having been said, I'll answer any questions, but there's there's more more heat than action at this point.
Thank you, Derek.
On the budget, real quickly, I'll probably start bringing budget work sessions. Earlier to get direction of where we want to go. We're in a much different environment. I don't think we're going to hit a recession, but clearly inflation is at three point four as of today. Interest rates are being held by the Fed at five and a quarter to five. And and it is slowing the economy down. They'd like to get inflation down to two percent. That's still quite a ways to go. But it means our revenue picture will look much differently. I'll have another revenue report for you at our next meeting. But. But we will budget differently than we have during the flush years of COVID and post-COVID. So I will be coming to you more frequently and more often to say, how do you want us to to pitch this to you?
Any questions? Thank you, Derek. We appreciate that. Bianca.
Today's our board meeting. This week, we there's this ego meeting. The admin meeting on the eighth, L P C on Friday, the ninth.
Uh it it's been canceled.
Oh, that one has.
Yes.
Um the NAGO conference on the ninth uh through the fourteenth. There's a health trust meeting from the fourteenth to the sixteenth.
Bianca, on the tenth. The Green County cattle growers has a a hundred and ten. Year celebration. They're having a uh. Dinner and dance at the fairgrounds. There is, there is a charge. There's only a hundred tickets for the dinner. Uh and then the dance is open to the public uh that evening. And I'm sure there's. I got that ride, didn't I, Lindsay? Thank you.
Um the Health Trust, the fourteenth through the sixteenth. And then LPC on the sixteenth. We have the Secretary of State coming on the sixteenth to do the LNA testing for. The equipment for the PPE um. In March, and it's just, it's the logic and accuracy testing of our equipment, our program. That is on the sixteenth, that eight twenty. Um our offices are closed on the nineteenth. Um we will have our board meeting on the twentieth. Small counties, ECO and WIPA on the twenty first. CSA on the twenty second, and then um the executive um CEGO board meeting is on the twenty third. March, LPC on Friday, the first. Our board meeting on the fifth. LPC on the eighth. And then Rancy. Has their spring break from the eleventh through the twenty second. Um Duncan's is the eighteenth through the twenty second. County managers on the fifteenth, LPC on the fifteenth. Election date, PPE, March nineteenth. Small counties, ECO and WIPA on the twentieth and CSA on the twenty first. Our last board meeting. Will be on the twenty sixth. Of March, and then LPC on the twenty ninth. I don't have, I can't see a CEGO meeting as of yet. When I check the calendar on for March. That's all I have from March. There's nothing to add. Going into April, um our board meeting on the ninth, LPC, the fifth. County managers on the twelve, um as well as LPC. Small counties, ECO. Um and with uh on the seventeenth Wednesday, eighteenth CSA. Um Board of Directors. And then our meeting, our board meeting on the twenty third. LPC on the twenty sixth.
Did anyone else have anything to add to the calendar or?
Nope, nope.
Okay.
Pretty cool.
Thank you, Bianca, and and. And on that elections, you know. Thank you for taking care of that. I appreciate that. Hope there's nothing more on the calendar in advance. We will go to agenda item eight.
I still moved that we approved the consent agenda supposedly.
Also get that.
Have a motion in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing now will proceed to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We now go to agenda item nine, Supervisor Reports, Mr. Gomez.
I don't have any to report today.
Okay, well, thank you. The uh. Legislation is really heating up over there, and as uh. Our county administrator said, elections. Uh water. And a lot of other things are having quite an effect. Uh just to show you, at the last LPC meeting, we acted on eleven. Uh bills. We opposed all eleven of them. Anything of any substance over there is just not there. Uh on the elections, uh first of all, ACO and the county recorders, thank you for all the work you guys are doing. On that. Trying to keep some sanity with our election process. Jen from ACO and and the recorders are are well plugged in there. We've said it, we testified it. Where we have confidence that the elections in Greenlee County are valid. They're well run, and the people that are run them care. So thank you to. Recorder, thank you to the election director. But. They just keep throwing some of these bills up that. I don't know. Water. Water uh. There's not anything yet that anybody can really get behind. The governor wants to. To push her. Uh water philosophy and. AMAs is not the answer. You know, I there's there's a lot of uh. Basins. In the state, I think there's fifty one. Each one of them is different. They ought to be managed different. Uh we're completely different on our. Water than the way they are on the along the Colorado River on the west side. It's not one. She will. Take care of it all. I do have. Some of the local uh sustainability. That they're. Some of them are are pushing for. Yet the governor appoints who's on that board. I have. Concerned with that. But water uh. I'm I'm going over tomorrow and listen to several bills that are in the Senate naturally source. Uh just to get a lay of the land. With uh. You know, they last year, they took a hundred and forty three million. Uh dollars away from the one billion that they put for the long term water augmentation. They're looking at it with budget shores. They're looking at it again. I can assure you that that with a staff and the board are. Trying diligently. To. Come up with a mechanism. Where we can evaluate long term water augmentation project. Projects. And do it. With validity. And hopefully something that will truly augmentate. Water. In the in the state. Now, when we talk about water. Most of this augmentation, you know, I know the rural areas. Will come in at such a price that only the cities can afford it. That's fine. As long as they quit. Taking the pressure off, as long as they will take the pressure off the rural. Right now, uh it seems like uh. The AMO, which is Arizona Municipal Water Users, which represents the seven municipalities in central Arizona. They need water to grow, and if you've been out there, you've seen all the humongous warehouses and stuff that are going in. Every one of those need water. The big subdivisions, every one of those need water, and and they had several years ago, you know, you have to have a a hundred year assured water. Be in order to get permit to build. Lot of those problems. Have to be solved. And hopefully. We can get some level heads and. And 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 resolve this. Uh but but. In the end, I think uh our partner ACO, their Arizona Association County Officials, they're our partner. We're working hand in hand on a lot of issues. And uh. That's my report. And. With that. If there be no further business. Uh to be conducted. We are now adjourned.